...call to order the town of Atherton City Council study session meeting for July 3rd at 5:00 PM. City, can we have the roll call please?
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Wimmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mayor Lewis.
Here. So this is the time for public comments. If any member of the public would like to say something, this is the time for that.
Is it for things not on the agenda or for things on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
On the agenda. Is the question of a real estate tax part of the discussion today?
Real estate tax, the parcel tax, do you mean?
No, real estate, no, transfer tax.
No, no, real estate transfer tax is not.
That will probably not ever be a discussion until, unless this is the Charter City because those are not legal for general law cities under Prop 62.
So you can make a comment if you want to.
Well, my, my comment on the real estate tax would be, I think it would be a good idea, and I also am going to suggest later that I don't think the parcel tax is high enough, that Atherton deserves better, and that if we can't get a high enough parcel tax, maybe we should have both the real estate transfer tax and a parcel tax in order to permit us to look like the third wealthiest town in the country. That's all for now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other members of the public want to say anything? I presented, no, I'm on the agenda. Yes, sir.
I go up there here. Where's the timer? Where's the timer?
You know, this is kind of a loose, this is a study session.
Anyway, I agree very much with Jack regarding the transfer tax. We've talked about that for years. Hillsborough makes a ton of money off it. We wouldn't even need a parcel tax, but the realtors got together here years ago, they shut it down. But anyway, here's a great meeting, Atherton meeting, beautiful sunny day, July 3rd, 5 o'clock, you get four citizens, and three of them have their own ideas of why they're here, their own interior motives, and every other city, I watch Channel 26, I don't know if you people, I watch Palo Alto Town Council meetings, I watch Menlo Park, I watch Santa Clara, I watch all these committees on there. We're the dinosaurs. These people, this is beautiful today, but in February 3rd, it'll be raining and cold, and you have all these people at work, they can't come home from work, have dinner, try to come to a meeting. Yeah, I've been to these meetings, but I'm the only person until 10, 11, 12 o'clock. Why don't, we had this on the agenda years ago, they said it was too expensive. Well, every other town has it, as Mr. Roderick will tell you, they just did our street for these hotels that were about $500, $500 each, and it costs about a million or two, and we can afford these street overlays for this, we certainly could afford some kind of a videotaping of these meetings. So the elderly people, in this town, a lot of elderly people, a lot of people working, a lot of people with children, they can turn it on for a few minutes, turn it off. There's 7,000 residents, 5,000 voters, and if you couldn't get 200, 300, 400, 500 voters listening instead of 2 or 3 of us here, it's terrible. And we're the only, as I say, dinosaur in the area that's supposed to do this. And if you haven't watched 26, turn it on now, and then you'd be shocked.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? If not, I'll close public comments, and we'll go to our study session topics. The first item on the agenda is to discuss the process for the appointment and a special election to fill the vacancy left by the retirement of Jerry Carlson. So I'll turn it over to the city manager, and he will present.
Thank you, madam, members of the council. It's pretty straightforward, and this evening is just kind of information to the council. This is a study session, no decisions or motions or anything like that will be made. But as you've outlined, you've got a couple of processes. You've got the appointment process and the election process. You've already set in motion the appointment process possibility with July 8th. Candidate applications are due on July 11th. You set up a council meeting to interview and discuss, and from that meeting, you can make two choices, basically. You can select if you can, or you can call the special election. Both of them will be on the agenda for the council's consideration and action. If you are able to make a selection, that new member would be sworn in on July 17th. If you're not able to make a selection, then you can call the special election. The deadline for that is July 12th. Maybe set the meeting up for July 11th. You adopt the resolution to call the special election. Notice would be posted by July 15th. We've actually got other deadlines involved, so the city clerk is actually posting those notices in order to be compliant, and if you actually are able to appoint, then we just cancel them. July 15th through August 9th would be the nomination period for candidates. August 9th would be the last day to call the election for the parcel tax renewal, so that'll be something on the council's agenda either at the July regular meeting or the August 7th study session. November 5th, the election, and then certification of results and see to the new member on December 18th. With respect to picking a candidate, you go through the committee appointment process, and it'd be a very similar deal to that. If you had three candidates, you'd go through round one and make your votes. If it was a 1-1-2, you'd go to round two, 1-1-2 again. I would suggest maybe you end it at that point and kind of discuss next steps. Or it could be a, you know, 0-2-2. If it's a 0 for 1, then you X that person out, and you vote again and see what you can come up with. Or if it's a 0-2-2 and it changes, then you would actually have a selection with a 3. Or it could be 0-1-3, vote again, 0-0-4, if it's all 4, be voting for one candidate. So that would be the kind of scenarios. But you could run into, you know, you're voting a couple of times, and not everybody agrees on the candidate, so at that point, you come back for discussion and provide some direction on what the next step might be. So that's the two processes, I just wanted to put them out here for the council.
The processes are running in parallel.
Yes.
We could have a call for an election, and we actually could continue if we don't agree. It could be, again, for, we have 60 days.
Correct, you have 60 days.
People start filing, then is that, is there a problem with that? Do they file for, and then we make a decision? I realize it's way, it's way out there.
No, I think it's one or the other.
Well, you have 60 days to appoint. Maybe the city attorney, then he's been looking into this as well. You have 60 days to appoint and/or call the special election. So that deadline, in order to get it onto the November ballot, is July 11th.
And that's less than 60 days.
That's less than 60 days. So you technically still have time with which to appoint, and you've called the election. So your question is, if people have started to apply during that nomination period, what does that do to them? You could technically cancel the election because you've had a no.
All right. So there were to be two live things going on. Hopefully, we kind of run one to ground, but somebody can bring something up later on and say, let's go do something.
Right.
As long as it's in the 60-day period, that's fine, but I realize it's, you know, that's a far sighted, but I didn't know if when you, when we.
Does that work?
Decided or not decided, then.
See where the thing.
One would go, yeah.
Right.
Because I know that we were doing, you know, to protect ourselves, we're doing both.
Right.
Until the, until such time as the deadline to file for an election passes.
So 60 days until 60-day deadline closes.
No, no, the July 11th, July 15th.
There's a whole bunch of dates that are played here. There's 114-day dates there too. And that's the one that kicks it from November to next June. If you don't make that 114 days, then it goes to the next June. And so that's why we're running these in parallel.
Right.
I mean, otherwise, you just wait for the 60 days, if you do nothing, then we call the election. And that, if we did that, it would be absolutely too late to make the November 5th election, and we automatically kick it on next June, and this is a long period to go with.
And that would be really silly, because then the term is up in November, so it would be just a, you know, very short, very short term.
But I find nothing that says you can't call for the election and have that process start, and at a later date for whatever reason, take another vote, and you select somebody. You can certainly cancel the election and say, you know, we're not going to do that.
As long as that's within that six.
That was my, yeah, that was my understanding, but I wanted to verify it, because I didn't know if when you, when you, if we don't make a decision on the 11th, and then we go down the other path, because obviously, as prudent as we have to, that would, then that shuts off the other one.
So can I say that we've, we've put a deadline for applications to be submitted as of the 8th if we don't make a decision on the 11th, and we want, would we just reopen the process for?
So you could resolicit for candidates.
Resolicit for new candidates?
Good. We don't, we'd have to decide and say that we wanted to do that, but I just didn't know if that was still an option.
Right.
It would remain an option until that 60-day window to a close.
And even just if we just have the, I guess now, three candidates, maybe there'll be another one or two.
Right.
By then, you know, people may have a change of heart actually and say, you know, I'd like to have another vote.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to this discussion?
No, but the normal situation is if we've only one person running for election, we wouldn't have an election.
It would not.
That's correct.
Right, yeah. And they wouldn't be appointed, and the time to file it was over.
Right, but we have more than one at this point.
We don't know, we don't know.
We don't know.
Oh, as it can, as it can be, we have.
Till they file a pool of papers.
But we have more than one applicant for appointing.
Right.
Right?
Till a pool of papers, you never know.
You never know who's going to do it.
I thought there were two.
There's three.
There's three, but he's referring to if we go to an election, then if only one person files papers.
Right. Okay. I'll open up for public comment. Does any member of the public want to make any remarks about what the city manager has outlined as the process? Okay.
Process, it has to be unanimous selection?
No, it's, there's.
I thought that's where you were leading.
It's a.
I can't see.
Oh, at the very bottom?
Yeah.
That was just his last scenario, that if in round one, it was for candidate 1, 0 votes, candidate 2, 0 votes, candidate 3 got all 4 votes, well then, you know, that's a clear, clear win. Right above it is if candidate 1 got 0 votes, candidate 2 got 1 vote, and candidate 3 got 3 votes, then that's a clear win. So it has to be a majority, 3 to 1 or 4 to 0. Okay? Jack?
I assume that the meeting to interview candidates will be a closed session and not open to the public, is that correct?
You know, that's, that's, it's all going to be open.
Well, we do everything.
It's only 11.
Very good.
Good.
But no cheering sections?
Well, I think that's, yeah. Yes.
Now, Mr. Roderick, the November election, if occurs, is that a countywide, is that just Atherton or statewide? You know what's on the ballots?
That's a full countywide election.
Do you have any idea what's on the ballots?
No, as far, not this time, what else is on there now.
You don't know?
County's looking at parcel tax, I know that.
And there's some bond measures that are being looked at, school bond measures.
Yeah.
You know, Menlo Park.
The date by which to file things has not yet come, so.
Yeah, so, but there's, there's talk in the papers about a lot of bond issues for schools and student movements. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so that's, that gives us our options. Thank you for explaining that so clearly and graphically. Can we take a photo about that? Everybody get out your iPhones and take a picture of that. The second item on our study session agenda is to discuss about the parcel tax renewal, and we have a staff report that was prepared and given to us all in our agenda packet by the city manager, so would you like to present this?
Sure. Thank you, madam, members of the council. It's just a basic informational report, outlines what the current parcel tax levy rates are for particular parcels, whether they're improved or unimproved, private clubs or otherwise, and then lays out the 2009 measure statements as they went forward, the two companion pieces, one is the actual parcel tax, the other is authorizing the town to expend it and increase its appropriations limit. And then you have attached to that the actual 2009 ordinance and staff reports that were done at the time. It's recommended that the council this evening, you know, provide some feedback and discussion on parcel tax renewal in November or June, whether you're, you're looking at the possibility of changes in the amount of the parcel tax, and maybe discuss some of that. Again, there's no decisions to be made this evening, it's just a matter of discussion. We're looking to put this on the council agenda either at the July 17th regular meeting or the August 7th study session meeting as an action item, so crafting the ordinance and the measure for the council's consideration, getting feedback from the council this evening as to what we want that to possibly look like when we begin.
Okay.
So if I could ask a question.
Sure.
So I saw that we have, of course, the men of the circus club.
Yep.
We also have, we've got public schools, which obviously can't do anything about, we have private schools, and, and they contribute a fair amount of traffic from outside our community. Is it possible that we could levy this also on the private schools?
I don't know.
You know, it's very funny, I was sitting here looking at the list, and that question came to my mind about the time you started talking about it. Prop 26, you know, Prop 26 that was flung into law two years ago, says essentially, one of the things is, you have to, if you, if you charge a tax, you have to tax everybody. You can't pick and choose, you can't let senior citizens get away with something unless everybody else knowingly and voluntarily sort of, it picks up the slack with them. So you can't just say some pay, some don't pay. And so that's something that we need to look at, because the last time this was done, there wasn't a Prop 26.
And.
But that is a very good question, and it's something, I still have the answer off the top of my head.
Actually, this list, I think, goes back a number of years, a number of parcel tax years, renewal years, and when it came up in 2009, kind of after the fact, we all kind of looked at it and went, where's, where are the schools? I mean, are we only getting the Menlo Circus Club, private club? I mean, because they're not defining the, like, middle school or other schools as a private club?
No, they're not a club.
They're not a club.
Well, they kind of are.
Well, they are a private, you know, entity.
They're private, and it's, it's free.
And how did that miss, you know, slip?
There's nonprofits, I don't suspect they would be taxed, so if the schools have a nonprofit arm, and that's who actually owns the property, I don't know.
Well, the, of course, St. Joseph's and Sacred Heart are owned by the archdiocese of San Francisco.
Church of the Church of San Francisco.
Which is a nonprofit.
And, of course, Menlo, Menlo School, you know, obviously, they all have a, they all accept donations, they all have fundraisers, they all have a nonprofit arm.
What about Menlo College?
Menlo College also is a private school, but it has not, it's a nonprofit, you can make contributions and have it taxed deductible. However, the, you know, they do, the two high schools and the grade, grade schools obviously bring a lot of traffic, and, you know, and it's not, my, you know, my only comment is that the traffic mitigations that they, they've, you know, that they try to do, and they're expanding, expanding, and, you know, Menlo just expanded, Sacred Heart is always building, and they bring more and more kids, and, and not exclusively from this area. In fact, they pride themselves on bringing them from all of them.
Almost, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people are not.
And they own a lot of land. Right, and so, you know, I think that, I think that, you know, from a, you know, from a road impact, there is a, there's a justification for saying, you know, guys, we really think that you need to pump out, if we can find a way to make that happen.
Right.
And there may be, I think there's another small private school here too.
Montessori?
Yeah.
But that, that's on the grounds of St. Joseph's.
Okay.
And then there's the Knox Place School, which is on the grounds of Menlo Park.
Yeah, that's right.
So I have a question about each parcel available for tax owned by a utility which does not directly serve the Atherton area. Who would that be, and do we collect?
Well, I assume, since it's on there, there's probably a parcel out there like that, and it could be a water district or something that owns property or a community or a.
You tell me, Paul, I'm the pastor of the city, we put the pole in ours, and even all the lines run to somebody else's city.
Right, so Atherton and Alameda, there is a receipt repeater there for services, so that would be a private utility. If it's an actual parcel, if it's just an easement, that differs.
All right, I used, I don't know, I can't think of one that's actually a parcel. I mean, a Cow Water, you know, reservoir, but.
They service.
So the other question I had, and I asked George to prepare this list, is should we be charging people based on the size of their parcels? In other words, if you have a small parcel, less than a quarter of an acre, you get, it's 450 a year, for an acre, it's 750, and then for, for more than that, it goes up to 960. And really, the question is, is the parcel tax to provide services to the people? And are the services to people with small lots less than the services to big ones? And I have to say that I think that they, the services are the same.
The, the answer to that question gets fuzzy, and I have the section of the little handle plate, because here, here's, here's the problem with parcel tax. The parcel tax is an excise tax for basically having standby city services, town services at a higher level. Cannot make it an ad valorem, means property, a parcel tax, a property tax, excuse me, because if we're a property tax, it would be subject to the maximum of 1% under Prop 13. So the way to get around that is you say, we're just providing, you want more police services, then a bigger parcel, a bigger house theoretically has more people or more space, perhaps?
No, it's a.
So theoretically, here, there are studies that say, somebody with a bigger house is more likely to get robbed than somebody with a vacant lot. There's nothing to rob on a vacant lot, so you can have a difference in price there. You make a good point about the size of the vacant lot, but it's not just robbery, there are other vandalism, small fires, things like that that can take place, and the argument is, the bigger the property, you know, if you use extreme examples, a five-acre parcel is probably going to end up with more police services required than a quarter of an acre parcel.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I'm going to agree with Jim, you know, no offense. I think that the parcel, the use is, you can have somebody that sits on a small parcel that calls the police department 10 times a day.
We have, well, we have one of those actually.
Yeah, right.
Who will remain unnamed or unidentified.
And to me, if, if we were dealing with this as a flat parcel, I didn't see any study or analysis on how we came up with these, these numbers.
A long time ago.
Yeah, it's a long time ago, and I think that, you know, if we had a flat cost minus the circus club and so on, that it would be more consistent with what the intent is for its services in general. It's not, you know, and I would argue that there are many acre parcels that have flag lots that have no frontage of roadway and a driveway. I'm on a street that has six houses, and we all have 12 feet of frontage, which is driveway. So what are my services per se?
You drive to your house, do you, do you ever drive on any of the roads?
No, that, that's what I did, but based on, you know, a fee charged on an acreage parcel versus somebody that has, you know, in essence, a smaller parcel, I'd more frontage if that was the.
And usually, frontage is a, is a property tax, or a lean, an assessment of kind of a lean utilization of a square footage of how, how much curve government sidewalk somebody's put in, and things like that. In this case, what they're arguing, again, I'm not proposing whatever you want, but there's clearly a difference between undeveloped property and a developed one.
Absolutely.
And the difference in size of a developed property may or may not make a difference, but in terms of the number of, well, a big huge mansion probably has more staff coming on a daily basis using the road than does a single family dwelling with no staff. And so the concept being, this is not just about police services, although even, even that does have something to do with police services. More people, the more possibility of auto wreck, or somebody creating a fire, stealing something, something like that. And so there is, you don't have to have a lot of rationale, you just have to have a little rationale, you know. Johnny points out, you know, that maybe you're looking at ways of, or Jack, talking about, talking about ways of maybe bumping up the, the amount of the tax in logical ways. I would argue that one of the things you might want to look at is taking vacant parcels off the table totally. They don't, you really use, this is talking about enhanced services, not just basic services, because your property taxes are paid for those, at least arguably.
Well, I would, to some extent, not necessarily take vacant land off, but I can see why vacant land uses less. I mean, we have always advertised that the parcel tax is to provide services to the people of Atherton. We don't advertise a parcel tax as to help with property taxes or anything else, as to provide services. And if we're going to talk about that, the services that invited, I mean, I know several people who are very small parcels, who frankly, probably got a lot more services than I do or many of the other people do. And so I just have this funny feeling, in fairness, that we should just make it a flat tax to everybody.
I, I'm in agreement with, with Jim and Kerry as well. I think that, you know, many of the, and I understand, and I can see your point, Bill, but many of the other, like the school parcel tax, if you don't have any kids, you're still paying it, and it's, again, it was a flat number that went against every household. And, and the water district, you know, the San Mateo County, of course, you know, I got that call, and, you know, I don't know, maybe the rest of y'all got a call, but they're proposing a 70 or $35 parcel tax that's going to address lots of things like pollution control on the bay, as well as handling ways of doing runoff. Well, the larger lots have more runoff than the smaller lots, but at the same time, they're charging this 35 or 75 dollars, they haven't decided which, that they want to charge. So to me, a parcel is a parcel is a parcel, it should be one, one number, unless, you know, I think that your, your point on if it's a vacant lot.
I would, I would be cautious about the vacant lots, because what determines a vacant lot and how long, does it have to be vacant before it is a vacant lot? I mean, if you're going to, if you've got to buy an older house and take it down in order to rebuild, is it vacant for two months, six months, a year, you know? Do you know what I'm saying? Yeah, so that's, that gets a little.
That's a good point.
And, and the vacant lots, I mean, you still need police, you know.
I think some of the vacant lots take more police services.
Well, because you may have vandalism or homeless people there, or, you know, other kinds of.
Administered through the county, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's based on what's assessed, and then property's assessed with a dwelling unit on it, regardless of whether that dwelling unit is under construction or not.
It doesn't matter if it's occupied or not.
Right.
Vacant means that there's no improved dwelling or improvements at all on the property.
Until it's assessed.
Vacant land is just, you know, a lot, nothing on it.
Right.
And, and we, we will provide you, I'll be happy to provide you the good news and the bad news. The good news is there are cities out there that are doing it with basically flat taxes. The bad news is, there's a City of Oakland case where they got whacked, and had their, 1988 case had it set aside, and one of the reasons is because proportionality was not used at all. And proportionality means you set up the different, the different categories of property and tax them liberally based on the, the some concept of one, one type of property is using more services than another.
If it's a commercial property versus residential versus.
It's much easier in a city like that.
High density, and, yeah, because we don't have varying degrees of, of uses.
There are, there are some subtleties, but again, the staff, we've talked a little bit about, is it's possible to have a flat fee, so another thing, you have several flat fees based on categories.
Right.
And, and.
Well. And, 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 yeah, that's, that really ends up a policy decision that's a tough one, and I can tell you that there are, they usually don't list the whole bunch, but there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 practice tips on parcel taxes, and they run longer than the paragraph on parcel taxes. And so if you listen to what they're recommending, they're recommending that you very cautiously avoid the Oakland case by doing things like not, not charging vacant properties the same as. by doing things like not, not charging vacant properties the same as developed property.
We all agree, but we have a good rationale for our flat tax.
We're just all residential.
We're not doing this just out of the blue with a good rationale on the basis that this parcel tax in Atherton is to provide services to the residents. And that the services to small lots are exactly the same as the services to large ones.
So we did not poll on this concept.
No, the poll said, on average, we charge 750.
Right.
So it said, it said essentially, you know, are you willing to take 750? So, so it's, we kind of implied, you know, it's kind of a flat hang. I don't think there were even any words in all, I remember it said, you know, to a varying degree, it says we charge 750.
Well, I don't like that poll anyway, so.
Yeah, we were on it, but the question was, was it false advertising or did we get any insight, I think?
Exactly, right, yeah.
If what you're saying is correct, we're not going to be charging 750.
Right. Because we're not going to increase.
However, there are, yes, no, you are, with flat tax. So, I mean, I think that there is a danger in changing it at this juncture at a, as a flat tax without doing specific polling on it because of the education process to educate the residents about the rationale, they get some buy-in on that.
I think, you know. I've got, and I appreciate the opportunity to work on the questions. And I thought that the company that we worked with, Tim specifically, was very intelligent. And his analysis, you know, I was amazed with how he, you know, the logic that he used in developing the stuff, so I think it was good. I've heard from a lot of residents, and, you know, there's ways to look at it, and having sat through a couple other, like the San Mateo one, you know, there is, as I pointed out during the council meeting, there is a little bit of marketing that goes on in polling. And so, you know, I really think that we shouldn't be doing another poll. I mean, I wouldn't be 100% in favor, I've listened to the arguments of why we would, and, you know, maybe this is a good one, but.
I personally totally biased in favor of the parcel tax. I'm not saying that that's my-
I'm very careful with how much marketing we're doing with that 100 dollars on it.
Anytime anybody said no, they didn't agree with the parcel tax, they got to answer another question. Say, well, if we didn't ask, would you still say no? And then they added a third question, would you still? I mean, I just think that we have to be very careful, because we're not allowed, as a council, to be for or against the parcel tax. We're allowed to put it on the agenda, we're allowed to put it-
Oh, no, that's not true.
It can actually be for or against it until you take official action. And you haven't taken any official actions, you can be as positive or negative.
Right, I mean, once we take official action, we can't take it.
We're not there yet. You can take as strong a stance or as weak a stance as you want.
And in 2009, all five council members were very forcefully in support of the parcel tax and unanimously in support of it and signed the ballot measure. And, you know, sent that message out very loudly and clearly to the public that this was something that was very critical for the town's health and well-being and that, you know, we needed to pass it. And then a resident committee was formed, and that's when Mr. Ridgen first got involved in politics, so that's good.
But, you know, two or three residents have called me by that poll, and they were really upset. I'm not saying, you know, people say, well, I talk about two or three residents, as if it's everybody. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, a lot of the residents that called me are the positive workers in this town. And, you know, they're the kind of people generally, I mean, they support, they didn't like that poll, they just didn't like it.
Half acre parcels, half acre to two acre?
No, there's some that are even smaller, there are some that, you know, like, especially around here, just a quarter.
But there are some that are five and 10, there was a 10 acre lot, but I think there's only one. I think it got subdivided or it got partialled out, so I think, I think five is normally, yeah.
There's only three acre lots. But those are the ones that are getting charged more than 75.
It's not much more than 75, because of the size, but it's 960. But I think, I guess, obviously, we're not voting, discussing, but my, mine, if I could make a desire of what I, what staff I think should consider is looking at, you know, where, if we have to have a delineation, what would that delineation be? But comes as close to a flat tax, and then also investigate the schools, you know, vigorously. And, and, you know, and maybe, you know, maybe we need to look at the, you know, the $10,000. If it's been set as this way and it's been $10,000 for-
A long time.
Twenty, 30 years, I think inflation is, should have a couple of trouble.
Yeah.
So.
We can certainly return to the council with, you know, options for consideration with the ordinance. And one of them might be, you know, unimproved parcels X, improved parcels Y, utilities, private clubs, institutions. And then dollar figures connected to those, and then the current parcel tax for the council's consideration.
I've heard many people say, we should increase it here tonight, but in private conversations, when they say, well, how much is our parcel tax? And say, well, do, you know, you have about an acre, don't you? And yes, $750, because a month? No, a year, $750 a year. And so, you know, really, that seems like too little.
I see somebody who's lived here for 40 years running, paying any property. Okay. Okay, so there are a lot of those, and they say, yeah, I'm more than happy to pay more. But then a guy that's paying 40, 50,000 dollars a year in property tax, he doesn't want to pay anymore. And for somebody who moved here in 1996, I don't want to pay anymore. I'd just give you mine too. You know, I'm loathe to a lot of tax increases unless I, you know, there's a genuine need. And I think that, and I think a lot of my neighbors who were newer, you know, didn't move here from Palo Alto, like Jim or other people, and transferred in under the grandfather law and stuff like that, and their proposition's 60.
The grandfathers. You know, I'm careful.
I do think, I do think that, you know-